I already read the letter.
Okay, Wayne, did you have a chance to read the letter?
I did read the letter and what, obviously, you did that letter, correct?
I did, yes, correct.
And what, what was your intent exactly? Was it just to say you wouldn't be able to use the school and you were going to look somewhere else?
Um, yeah, so it's two parts. I can bring it up, so it's two parts. One is to let them know that we're not going to be using the school. And really, the main reason being the financial costs that they're passing on to us that was unbudgeted. But the larger reason to send this letter is in the last paragraph, part of the concern is that if these are the expenses that we can expect to see, you know, from, from the school, then it's going to jeopardize programs, town-run programs, if we're, if we're being charged. So I think it's really to an, at the very end, it's to initiate an in-depth discussion between recreation and Thompson Public Schools to strategize how we can work together because if we're expect, if we see these costs for all of our programs, for basketball, for, for pure, for before and after-school care, for any of the craft programs that we run in the school, we're gonna, we're gonna have some, they're gonna price us out, basically.
Yeah, okay.
We're not gonna be able to run any programs. And the other piece-
I thought that was your intent. I just wanted to, I'm, I'm kind of new to the-
Yep, absolutely.
How, how the relationships between Board of Ed, Recreation, CPW, how, how it all kind of works.
Absolutely, so we, we haven't been charged in the past for anything unless it was over what they were doing. So for example, if the custodians are there past their normal time, we're charged for that. So on a Saturday morning or on an evening, if we have programming, you know, so if it's outside of the scope of their normal work, then rec is charged for that time. Otherwise, the custodians are there, it's paid for by the school, it's already budgeted, and that's how it's worked. So now, this would look different. They're talking about taking those normal custodial hours and that where they're already budgeted and already there and, and transpassing them on to, to rec. And so that's what concerns me because we didn't budget that way.
Gotcha. So that, that proposed custodial charges, that's, is, is it just, are they bringing in a third party to do these cleanings or is it just-
No, I can, I can show you that. I'll bring up the, the email from Bill Birch.
Is it because they're gonna have to do a lot of additional cleaning, probably?
Yeah, so essentially what they're proposing is this schedule right here. So these two folks, Custodian one and Custodian two, would work for two hours at the end of the day and clean the build, the two rooms that we're in and the bathrooms. So anytime we get charged for custodians, even if it's only for 15 minutes, even if they only work for 15 minutes, we get charged for two hours. That's contractual in their union, or I, that's just how it, how it is. So that's what we see here is Custodian one and Custodian two are cleaning at the end of the day. The rate of pay is 23.61, five days a week. That's where that cost is, 236 per person. And then they're assigning a Custodian three with, with the, with camp for the entirety of the day. They budgeted for eight hours, although we're only proposing six hours, which I did ask for that to be corrected. But, yeah, they're, so they're proposing to have a custodian assigned to the camp to wipe down the bathrooms in between usage. And saying that essentially one custodian would need to be assigned to our program the entire time we were utilized, you know, during operations. You know, in the Office of Early Childhood Guidelines, they're saying that you need to wipe down surfaces between usage, you know, but that, in my opinion, could be a counselor with a, a, you know, Clorox wipe, wiping down the ha, the sink handle and the, you know, toilet and the doorknob that the person's touched. It does not need to be a custodian sitting, sitting there waiting for, you know, a child to use the bathroom at, you know, and then wiping it down at 23.06 an hour. You know, even if I was to hire one staff member to do that same thing, they're making 11.25, you know, or, and $11 an hour, not 23.06.
Probably with the union, they have to have their employees do it.
Right, so I think that's what, I think that's what Melinda is most comfortable with, is that in order to ensure that it's being done properly, that, and, and with the union. The union is hired to clean the building, so that's who cleans the building. So they sent these costs over, they also sent a second up, a follow-up email with, uh, and this is a follow-up email saying that it would be 18.75 for cleaning supplies for five weeks. We've never been charged for cleaning supplies. They clean up after, before care and after care, basketball, every program, and we've never been charged for cleaning supplies before. So-
There's gonna be extra cleaning supplies, even like where, where, where I work, there's all gonna be, have to be extra cleaning supplies and extra-
Correct, yeah, correct. Which is why in the letter I said we're sensitive to the need for additional maintenance as a response to COVID-19. But, um, you know, this, again, the point of the letter, Wayne, you asked, this is a time that we need to, to partner with them and to come up with what, what the solution is because the, the charging of rec will only hurt the Thompson residents because we did not budget for it and we will not run programs if, if they're not unaffordable for our families. You know, we can't, we just won't, we won't be able to sustain.
We have to find that out, which is true, so this letter sounds good to me.
Right, so I think the second step to this letter, and, you know, we just passed a budget, but this would be looking forward, is that, you know, if, if it's gonna be charged to, to rec, you know, if rec is gonna cover these costs, then it needs to be budgeted for in the rec budget, you know, and taken out of, of the school, the school budget, you know, if they're shifting or, or, you know, an additional hire or however, we just need to have that dialogue and open up that dialogue, which is why we're requesting that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, it has, it has to be decided upon.
Yeah, as a team, you know, because-
Yeah, as a team, yes.
Again, I, I understand that there's a need for additional cleaning, just they have to understand that this is pricing us out of the building.
Yeah, it's pricing us out and we have to figure, like you say, for the fall. I mean, we have to know for sure, you know?
Right.
If they're gonna continue charging this fee.
Right, right, so I have-
Say, I was, the letter, the letter looks good to me.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I wanted it to come across as, you know, firm, like, you know, I was kind of sticker shocked, like, you know, we're, we're a town program and you're a town building. Like, let's, let's work together here. That's really, but it also is to inform them that we're not going to because even if they are like, okay, let's negotiate, blah, 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 let's work it out, you know, like, I, I need to move forward at this point. I have, you know, many other irons in the fire. I'm figuring out what we're doing with summer concerts. I'm trying to develop an online counselor and training program. I'm looking at other online programming. I'm examining, I'm, I'm, I visited another potential site today, you know. I, I need to be at, to close this chapter and this door. And quite honestly, I need to be thinking about the fall because-
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, you need to be thinking about the fall now.
Yeah, we have, you know, it's possible that our, our before and after-school coordinator won't be returning. So that's a big hire to make and that, that needs to happen in July, you know, so it's-
Now, now, I was on a webinar with May Flux ready the night, and there was a question that came through about the schools and what she said, that it's not to be determined until middle of July, about the schools.
Yeah, that's what I've heard from Melinda. I asked her, when we were on the call, I asked her to just keep rec in mind and as she's getting information to just, like, when does she expect? And she said that she doesn't think she'll hear anything until mid-July.
That's, that's what May Fluxer said.
Yeah, so, and I think, um, you know, and we'll talk about this at the next meeting, but this is a problem that, you know, childcare across the state is having. Not just this, not just because of the school, but just increased expenses overall. The increase in minimum wage, you know, that's gone up now that we're getting ready for our second round in September, the increase of COVID. You know, one of the, one of the good things is that I got an email from the Connecticut Parks and Rec Association saying that there's some expenses, if they're unbudgeted, cleaning expenses, they're reimbursable, right? So then I was like, oh, great, well, then like this could be covered by that, by that, those funds, those state funds. But because it's budgeted by the school, those hours and tho, those wages, they're not hiring anyone extra, it's a budgeted expense. It wasn't budgeted by rec, but it was budgeted by the school, so therefore it's not reimbursable. So if we were to go to another location and I was to hire a cleaning staff at 11.25 an hour or $11 an hour, and it's not something that I had ever budgeted before, a position that we've never had, we've never budgeted for it, that would be reimbursable from this state, these state funds. So, just another, you know.
Where was, where was the other location that you had looked at? Like, what, what type of facilities?
Yeah, so a couple of things, a couple of possibilities that I've been thinking about. One was the library, of course. Allison, the library director, is on vacation this summer, or this week. And so, but she had been open to that dialogue, so I'm gonna re-initiate that conversation with her. And so one's the library. The second location and who I reached out to, and I know it's a sensitive time for them, is St. Joe's with the announcement of them closing, you know, the possibility. I'm looking long-term, not just summer, but, you know, what, what are they gonna be doing with that building in the fall? Is there an opportunity to, to rent that space? And really, I mean, when I think about renting that space, that could be senior programming, wellness classes, you know, adult education, like a part, you know, well, that, that's a huge, a huge opportunity, you know, a larger, a larger community center, you know, in a way. And then the third is that today I went and looked at Turning Point Dance Studio and Charlene Langley, who's on the EDC Commission, you know, had, I'd mentioned that it's an empty space during the summer. And so I went to look at that space as well. So I had kind of have, you know, I haven't heard back from St. Joe's. You know, really, my, my mindset on St. Joe's is I'm thinking about the fall, you know, because again, if the school comes back to us, yeah, these are costs that you can expect, then really I want to get into St. Joe's in the fall. Camp is one thing, you know, it's June 4th. You know, if we can throw something together for these kids, anything, you know, whether it's the library or Turning Point, you know, just to give some relief, some social time to the kids, some relief for these parents, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out, but-
What about, what about insurance and stuff? If we were to be using St. Joseph's School, would it be town insurance? And what if someone got hurt and all that, you know, that has to be looked into.
Yeah, it would have to be looked into, so we'd have to have a rental agreement with them. You know, it'd have, it would have to be a rental agreement. And, and the same thing with Turning Point because it's not a town-owned building. So if we're in the library, you know, it's a town building, so it's a town program.
We'd have to look at liabilities for, you know, anyone getting hurt or anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
What about the summer hires? I mean, you didn't actually hire them, you said, right?
I did not hire anyone.
You didn't hire anybody? Are you gonna contact them saying we're not gonna be doing the summer camp? Or what are you gonna do?
Yeah, I think that I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait until Allison gets back from vacation. And I think, quite honestly, the library is my number one choice because it is a town building. I know that's based, the location of it. So I'm gonna chat with her and see what she's thinking, what she would be willing to host, and then try to put something together on that and then contact the staff, you know. But I, I really only want this to drag on, you know, maybe, you know, maybe till like the 15th of June. And if by the 15th of June, we can say, okay, we know what we're doing, this is how long it's gonna be, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what age groups it's gonna be, okay, we can post it, we can hire, you know, let's go. The good news is that I was worried that we weren't going to see registrations. You know, we might open for 30 and only get six kids. But I have heard through the grapevine that registrations at other day camps are going well. So I know that there's a waitlist at the Putnam Y and Quanania reported that their enrollment is going well also, so. And the other thing that changed is that the Office of Early Childhood did increase the minimum, the maximum number of campers you can have from 30 to 50. So we could, you know, if we have the, the space to separate those groups, we could take up to 50. In the library, we can't do that, we can only still take 20, but-
What about wearing masks and things like that? Are they required to do that?
No, staff, staff are required, campers are not. Yeah, so I have a copy. So it talks about health screening, taking the child's temperature upon arrival, if they're greater than, or size being limited to 10 children and serving no more than 30, which is now 50. We have to provide a sick room, a designated sick room or area. And then, and then cloth face coverings for each employee at all times when in the workplace. But does not, not required by a child in a childcare setting. So that would be us, a child in a childcare setting. Hand hygiene, so you have to have postage of hand washing and access to running water and hand washing stations. And then there's a cleaning guidance for cleaning protocol as well. And, and then, and then this is about contacting your local health department if somebody tests positive and so on and so forth.
And they, they have to practice the social distancing, that the kids have to all be separated?
They have to be separated in groups of 10. So if they're in their group of 10, they don't have to be like six feet apart. It does encourage you to separate them like when able, but, and it encourages you to, you know, not play like games with a shared ball and to have separate, you know, like separate supplies, like art supplies. So every kid has their packet of these are your markers, these are your scissors, but, and like not using a shared equipment.
Could you send me those guidelines for the summer camps? Because that may, um, that may help for unrelated to, to the summer camps, but for Little League, that may-
Yeah, I think the best guidelines for Little League that you're gonna get, and I sent that email to you on Tuesday, and I'll forward you notes from that, but I'm going on Tuesday to a webinar about, and it's gonna talk more about youth sports directly, youth programming and youth sports and their guidelines. Because Office of Early Childhood is a governing body for all childcare. So although these are helpful, you don't have, like, as a, I don't know what, who over, who's setting your guidelines as a youth sport. This is only for camp, only for camp, really, and child, but, but it is helpful, see, I can send them to you, of course.
Yeah, because we, we receive guidelines from Little League, but they're, you know, weak and too old.
Okay.
And it, it's pretty, it's, it's a lot, you know? So it's gonna be tough for the, for the, for the younger groups. So we don't know if we're gonna be able to do the, the T-ball coach pitch age range. We might, we might just be doing the nine to 12.
Okay.
And there might be age restrictions on the youth sports too, so we're, we're kind of-
Yeah, I'll let you know-
Kind of waiting to see, you know?
I'll let you know what comes out on Tuesday and what's said as far as the state of Connecticut. I, the only thing I've seen really in regards to youth sports was something from the governor saying, like, no contact sports where they're sharing. So like no basketball, no, like you could have, like your tennis courts can be open, but you, you know, your basketball court should be closed, you know, your frisbee shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't be playing frisbee, that sort of thing, but. So, you know, and I'm sure you can modify it, you know, like, I mean, every kid can have their own bat or you're cleaning the bat between, you know, usage, like, that's just best.
We're, we're gonna figure, we're gonna figure something out. As soon as it's kind of like, okay, you can do it and here are the guidelines, then that would be nice. You know, then we can move.
I'm meeting with Amy and Rich on, on Thursday next week after that webinar. So I'm, you know, I have a webinar on Tuesday and then I'm meeting with Amy and Rich on Thursday. And we've had requests for field rentals, so we're gonna talk about field rentals and what we're doing with that as well. So I have a feeling that after the 4th of July, we'll have people on our fields practicing. That's kind of my, my, I don't wanna say June 20, I'd like to say like, okay, let's wait till after the 4th, you know? It's like, just give it a little bit of time.
Yeah.
But people are itching to get out, for sure.
Yeah, we, we have, we have, you know, some teams, some travel teams, they're, they're already registering people and they've reached out for, for the use of the fields and the senior league field. And it's, I'm kind of, we're kind of stuck because if we're, if we're not gonna use them for, for Thompson, then I'm not gonna open them for, for, for other people, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I would agree to that. And that's something that I've been seeing coming, coming from the governor, you know, and that's with camp. It, we, we would only open, whatever we do open is gonna be for residents only. You know, that's one, because we're restricted to the number of people that we can have. And two, because the goal is that you're staying within your community, you know? They don't want people crossing over like street lines and this and that, so. I mean, that's what we would do and I, I, and the same thing with the renting of the fields, you know, I wanna give priority. I mean, that's a little different because it's adults and, you know, I know that like they have an adult league, they're coming from all over the place, but like you said, if you're not running your Thompson programs, then like why would you, yeah, I wouldn't give it to-
Yeah, the, the, the politics of it and stuff, while the perception, if, if people drive by and there's people out there playing and, and they're not playing, their kids are playing, I, I don't know if I wanna go through that.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
We must stay away from that.
Yeah, it's definitely what, what we're experiencing too with Quanania being open. It's like, well, Quanania is open, so why aren't you open yet, you know? Or Killingley's, Killingley just announced they're opening camp, why aren't you opening camp yet, you know? And so I think that it's, you know, everybody's situation is unique.
Well, Quanania will clean their own building, you know, I mean, they live there.
They have, like, they have their own building, that's what I'm gonna-
They have their own building, they run it, I mean, they don't have the expenses like we have, you know?
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, they have the expense of a building, but, you know, it's, it's something that they budgeted for and that they're prepared for, you know, and if they, they don't have to ask, they don't have to wait, you know? We don't have to wait to get permission.
They need to, they need to open.
Right, they, right, exa, again, they have to-
They have to open.
They have to, and yeah. And Killingley is opening in the school. They have, you know, a, a supportive school district that's opening for them with 60 kids. But their, their town program, as you saw in the letter, their town program is heavily subsidized by, by the taxpayers. I think, you know, according to their rec director, the money that they charge, you know, really is just, goes to help offset their overall budget, you know? It's, you know, so it's under, Killingley's charge is under $100 a week, you know, for their kids to go to camp. Like, and that's because majority of it's subsidized by their taxpayers. But again, I, you know, we've been able to be self-sufficient and that would be the goal, you know? But the other goal is to keep it affordable, you know? And, and we're, we're, we're reaching that, you know, tipping point of it of, you know, with the increase in minimum wage and now with increase of COVID cleaning costs, that where it's, we, we need help, you know, we need help to survive. It's not, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll take some of the letter and then see if they wanna meet with us.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go to the Board of Ed meeting on Monday and I'll send you all a link if you're able to make it and you wanna go. I don't really plan on saying too much. I plan on sending the letter and I'm also gonna be CCing it to the Board of Finance and to the Board of Selectmen. I'll CC all rec commission members on it as well, so you know that it's gone out. And then I'm gonna go and just have, the letter will be presented and read and I'll just, you know, be there if anyone has any follow-up questions. I don't really wanna engage in a dialogue with them back and forth of, oh, well, we could cut this or we could cut this. And, you know, we're, I just, yeah, I wanna pursue other locations and, and at this point, like, let, let's just make that so they can focus and let's, let's talk about the fall. You know, let's not try to work out the summer on June 8th. Let's talk about the fall.
Yeah, sorry, you, you know, June, you know, I mean, it's like, it's time for the fall now.
Right, right, so we need to, we need to just focus our efforts on what, what the fall's gonna look like and, and come to an agreement and a solution on that. Because again, I don't want it to be August 1st and we don't even know if we can run before and after care. Like, that, we can't, cannot-
No till the middle of July with the school, though.
Right, right.
Why not?
Right.
Because that's what she said the other night.
Right, and so I think the question for that would be, you know, if the school is open, will they, will, will they allow us in, you know, or is that still conditional? You know, obviously, if the school is closed and they're on virtual learning, we're not in the building. But if the school is open, will you let us in? And if you let us in, what, what, what does the charge look like?
Right, right.
I know that those are all big questions and that the decisions might not come until July, you know, July or August. But if I know that we are, then I can pursue, like, okay, well, if it does open, we are gonna be in because we can afford it and we know what those costs are and we're budgeting for it and we're charging, you know, we're charging our families appropriately or we're looking for assistance somewhere else because, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's good to get the homework done, it's good to get the homework done.
I feel behind, I feel really behind. The reopening came fast, man, I don't know where May went, I don't know where-
It's like it's been crazy for everybody, you know, it's just like, even where I work.
You're right.
Well, it's difficult, you know, because in April, we all were thinking like, okay, nobody do anything, like nothing's happening. And then as soon as the reopening, it just came fast and furious and you really don't know. It's just hard to gauge who's, are people comfortable? Do they wanna go out? Are they ready to go to camp? Like, it's just, yeah, it's really tricky to me.
It depends if there's more cases this summer too or less cases or, you, you know, you don't know.
Right, and even, even personally, the school, you know, I think, you know, even three weeks ago, when we started this dialogue, you know, on May 15, we had a, a meeting and they may feel, Melinda may feel differently now or more comfortable now allowing people into the school than she did on May 15, you know? Everyone's sort of finding their way and each day getting a little bit more comfortable.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, I'm trying to be patient, but again, it's, all this requires a lot of planning, a lot of planning. I wanna just be ready for, for September in whatever decision the school makes, you know? And, and there to support them because quite honestly, even if, if they aren't in school and they're doing virtual learning, there may still be a need for childcare. And what does that look like? What does that look like?
Yeah, it's hard because, you know, when the kids are home and, you know.
Yep, absolutely, so. Okay, thanks, I appreciate you both getting on, hopping on tonight and then at a time. And Wayne, I'll forward you over those early childhood camp regulations and I'll send everyone the, the link to the Board of Ed meeting. And if you have the chance to attend, just to show support, it's fine, otherwise, oh, hey, Charlene? Otherwise, uh, she's, Charlene's jumping on, I'll be, yeah, I'll be on that meeting and reading the letter, so. Charlene, are you there? Charlene, are you there? We're just, we're just finishing.
I know, I just got back from stuffing 300 and, oh, 404 meals.
Wow.
So for those who don't know, this is Charlene Langley and so she owns Our Father's Table and the Turning Point Dance Studio as well. And so, and she's on the Economic Development Commission. And so I toured her location today. So Charlene, we just went over the letter that we're giving to Board of Ed and I've mentioned touring your, you know, touring the building today. A couple of questions and you and I will chat more about something that Cindy brought up, brought up, was just, you know, insurance-wise and liability, you know, making sure that that's all squared away and having a formal contract, just so, you know, it's protecting you, protecting the town and all of that if we do move forward with the location, so.
Okay.
But yeah, so we'll be, be in touch soon.
Okay. Thanks.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
I see, oh, Amy's here too. Oh, hey, Amy.
Hi, Amy.
Oh, everybody's jumping on.
Everybody's jumping on now, huh?
So I was on at 6:00.
Oh, you-
And now everybody's coming on at 7:00.
What did my email say, 6:30?
6:30.
Yeah.
I thought it said 6:00.
That's okay. Amy, are you there?
I'm here. I thought it was, I didn't even look at the, I just thought it was 7:00, so I'm-
Our meetings are normally 7:00, but we moved to 6:30 this, this year in January, we changed to 6:30. So all of our meetings are special meetings, so that's a change. So we're just wrapping up, but we just reviewed the letter and, yeah, that's pretty much it. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, so I didn't miss, I didn't miss too awful much.
No, no, no.
Already talked about.
Yeah, everything that you and I already touched base on, and I'll send you um, the letter uh, as well. And then just that we're gonna attend the Board of Ed meeting if able and to answer any questions if they have any. And that really our main focus is um, requesting a co- a, a meeting and in-depth conversation, really looking towards the fall. You know, I wanna put summer to rest, we need to think about the fall, because that's, you know, and I know, I said to Cindy, I know that they may not know till July, but I wanna know, well, what are they thinking? You know, let's just start that conversation, what are you thinking? If you are open, do you see us being in the building? What do you see as being, what, what space could we use? What would charges look like? What, how would we work together? If you're not in the building, you know, we know that, that that's, um, you know, not an option if they're doing virtual learning or, you know, just to start that dialogue, cause
Yeah.
The, the fall is, I feel like we're, you know, on June eighth, we're kinda late to the game with camp. You know, kinda, kinda half, but, but I mean, we may still have something, you know, in August or, um, you know, some of these other options, but. Yeah, I wanna just.
Also, like I was telling Leslie that I think it's like middle of July before the schools know if they're gonna be able to open in the fall or not.
Right.
I was on a webinar with um, on May Fluxer this week and someone had asked that question and that's what she, that's, that is more like middle of July before the schools actually know.
Yeah, so that's pretty much, um, all we've got is just to, you know, um, you know, and there's a lot of unknowns, but just to keep that dialogue open and start that conversation sooner rather than later. Um, so that we're not caught off guard.
Leslie's doing a very good job with all this, um, planning and.
Feel like I'm spinning my wheels, but.
You're doing good.
Appreciate it.
That, that she is, I, I concur with that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amy. Well, thanks for jumping on, everyone, and uh, have a good night. Thanks for being here, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you guys, thanks, Leslie.